The committee of the who's back from recess. We had exhausted the number of speakers on the amendment by Senator B.J. Cruz to increase the appropriation from $600,000 to $2.6 million.
Yeah.
Senator, what's your show, did you?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a very quick point of clarification before we proceed. I want to go on the record again and clarify that my comments relative to the certification law had nothing to do with whether or not this overtime is needed or whether or not this overtime that our police officers incur is justified. My comments were really restricted to the certification law, how this government cannot certify to incur any obligations of the government without the funds being there. Apparently during the break that we just came out of, there was already some misunderstandings about what I said to mean that maybe I'm not supportive of our men and women out there. Some people have misconstrued my comments to mean that when a police officer is responding to an emergency and he has 10 more minutes left in his shift, that he's supposed to, here she is just supposed to go back to the station and then just go home. That's not what I said. I said that certainly those emergencies exist and the overtimes are necessary. But what I was really leaning on was the chief of police to project what the overtime needs are for the department. And so if he has X amount of money, that he should be making sure on a percentage basis that he's exhausted 10%, 20%, 30%, 40%. Apparently, he's done that by telling BBMR that there's going to have a shortfall, but it just goes beyond telling BBMR that they're going to have a shortfall, that the governor has to step in and declare an emergency so that this government can continue to provide for these overtime payments. I don't know what's worse, having our men and women work and beyond their shift work, telling their families that they're having all this overtime, that when they get their checks, their spouses or significant other would ask, well, where's the overtime money? So that's just what my point was, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, is that I never said anything about the need for overtime for all of our law enforcement personnel or anyone in the government for that matter. I think my comments need to be further looked into to see whether or not the, any department agency or agency head has the authority to incur these obligations. And we were told that they don't key in these overtime payments because it'll show they're running a deficit. So again, my message to all the police officers, how do you expect this government to pay you overtime when their overtime has not even keyed into the AS400? How do you expect the legislature to be aware when their overtime is not keyed in? So thank you for the opportunity to allow me to clarify, and I don't want to give anyone the opportunity to take my comments out of context. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Could you just call the chief of police and the ASO? I guess I haven't exhausted the list. Senator Cristoines.
Mr. Chairman, I thank you just to allow me a few moments. I did basically just speak on this issue for the purposes of calling a recess. And the reason why I wanted to speak once again, a simple statement, two points to make on the record. I feel uncomfortable with this amendment, not because I don't want to pay the overtime and not because I don't think that this is a priority and important. My first point is, as you spoke, Mr. Chairman, prior to my asking for a recess, there seems to be a gulf between the reconciliation from Office of Finance and Budget of prior year obligation for overtime and what the current bill contains. And then the second point I would make, Mr. Chairman, is that we are now in and working on current fiscal year obligations. And I believe if I follow the testimony correctly and my, just off the top of my head, recollection was other than the 10% reserve, all of the other monies have been expended for overtime. And then there appears to be, I didn't hear a fully, unless that could be corrected now by the team, I didn't hear a full accounting for what currently was on the books for current year outstanding. To me, that would be a more appropriate number. First, to reconcile the difference between $60,000 and $600,000 as identified in this legislation, and then to move forward by a truly reconciled number for current year outstanding. And then if we wanted to give appropriate appropriation authority in this bill now for current year, which really, if you think about it, Chief and the ASO, that money should be able to be reprogrammed via whatever the mechanisms exist anyways. But we could show this legislature's true intention of making sure we're taking care of our men and women in blue, the frontline folks, but getting a little bit closer number in terms of the reality of what the disparity is. So I have no objections to the good speaker moving the amendment based on what was represented. But I think we need a, I for one, to vote on something to that. I would like to see, you know, a spreadsheet of sorts to be able to identify and maybe formulate it as an attachment, Mr. Chairman, to this legislation, showing exactly what we're doing. Because I don't want to get us, personally don't want to get us, not saying we don't want to pay it, but get obligated to the point of $2.6 million when perhaps we have $800,000 or $750,000 of current obligation, and then give us the flexibility to, you know, to work with the cash management position of the government going forward as the overtime occurs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. I just want to clarify, Senator, the $60,000 prior year obligation report that was passed out was produced by GPD. It wasn't produced by Office of Finance and Budget. It was part of the budget documents submitted by GPD through BBMR to the committee. So that number is not our number. If there's a reconciliation that needs to occur, I think the chief needs to reconcile that versus what he's telling us today.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, so your current position is that would be the only information you have today?
Correct.
In regard to what's outstanding. So it may truly be the $600,000 as identified.
It could be.
Okay. So I'll yield then, Mr. Speaker, Chairman, to the balance of the conversation. Thank you very much.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
State your point of order.
Now that it has been brought to the attention of the committee and the chief, you're saying that the $600,000 in overtime, he's saying that he thought it was 60 or he was advised it was 60. Are you, but are you going to now take his numbers and the police department's numbers and say that, and confirm that it is $600,000? Because we're still saying it might be, but they're certifying that it is. So is it now the position of the Committee on Appropriations that it is $600,000? And then, no?
No, I cannot confirm that immediately for you. If we had a public hearing, we could confirm it, but I could not confirm that at this time.
And the reason why we're not going to confirm that is because of...
Don't have the details.
But he just gave us the details.
It's not enough. There's no names attached to the overtime. It's by division. There's no...
So you're basically saying you don't trust their numbers?
No. I'm saying that in order for you to get me to certify it, I need that detail to certify. All right. So on the amendment by Senator B.J. Cruz to increase the appropriation from $600,000... Yeah? To $2.6 million. All in favor?
Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry.
There was an objection to the amendment.
Just, I have a point of inquiry, Mr. Chairman. I did make a request prior to us getting to the point of voting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct. The interest?
These are all unaudited numbers, just to point of clarification. What we just did, what payroll had just done was just add the 10% to the $600,000. That's for 2013. Because it does say 10% interest. So we just added 10%. So it comes up to $668,000.
Okay. So Sanders and Nicholas?
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, make an amendment to the amendment to have it read $2,668,000.
Okay.
And if we can entertain that amendment to the amendment first.
All right. On the amendment to the amendment to add $68,000, correct?
$668.
Yeah.
Total.
Right. But you already have 600. So just $68,000 additional.
$68,000.
Yes, okay. I have Senator Yama Shida, Senator Rodriguez, and then Senator McCready on that amendment to add the interest of $68,000 to the $600,000. Everybody follow that?
And that's for 2013, right?
Correct. Okay.
Speaker Ben, thank you. And so as that goes towards the $600,000, the $697,000 amount, the amendment that the vice speaker offered was to go to $2.6 million. So what would be your interest amount for that? Because I believe the whole idea in this exercise was to make it complete. So you don't have to keep coming back.
Right. Okay. So I just want to get more information. Are we including all the way through the ending of the fiscal year or just up to pay period ending May 3? Because if we are going to include up to September 30, then it will come up close to $2.6 million.
And I think, Speaker Ben, that was actually the point.
Yes.
We had incurred and we had not yet incurred.
Correct.
And the point was that we wanted to ensure you had the appropriation needed to cover all overtime, which does include the interest that you described.
Correct. Of which...
So then the question, ma'am, was what is that amount?
The amount for 2014, with a projected $600,000 from pay period ending May 17 to September 30, that's an additional 660 plus 1.2, $1,285,318.57 for January to May 3. That's inclusive of the 10%.
Okay.
So if you want to put the total just for 2014, 1.9 million, $1,945,318.57.
But then you're leaving out the 213.
These are unaudited numbers, and this is a projection too, and we haven't closed fiscal year FY14 yet.
I'm sorry? So Speaker Ben, that's problematic. Is that correct? Since they're not, and I think that's what your point was, we haven't been able to certify these numbers.
Well, we, I'm just saying that I think the budget itself provides enough flexibility for the governor to move the appropriations contained. He received a lump sum budget, so if his priority is GPD, then he can do the allocations, modifications from other departments and agencies to support GPD. So that is, it's problematic in terms of just what's happening with regards to this fiscal year. Senator Yama Shida, Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, before we broke for recess as well, I was asking if someone can provide the answer on what the balance is on this SAR account. Because we can be here all day and we can increase it from 600 to 2.6, and now we're going to increase it because we know what the interest is. And again, I think everyone wants to make sure we pay our police officers their overtime. But, you know, I don't know if you can answer, if someone, if one of our colleagues can answer, what is the balance on the SAR account?
Senator McCree?
Did you, are you asking me the question, Senator?
If anyone will you...
He's directing the question to the chair, and the chair's directing the question at you.
And so I would direct the question to BBMR and ask them to clarify how much money is actually in the SAR. And I can tell you right now, I don't think 2.6 or 2.68 or whatever the amendment to the amendment was. So that's why we asked for BBMR to come in here and testify.
Fred, can you tell me where BBMR?
Right now, I have no answer whether BBMR will be able to make it down here. So, but I suggest that BBMR is the one to communicate to them, to schedule them to come down to give some of these answers that the senators need before, to make their decisions on these financial issues.
Can you send a police car to get him? I'm serious.
Thank you for that suggestion, but, you know, our cars are reserved for emergency situations involving life and death.
Can you give him your car?
My car's private vehicle. I'm showing the troops that we're cutting down costs on...
Is there a car out there right now?
I haven't, I haven't seen any official vehicle.
Is there a car that's unmarked?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Does the Office of Finance and Accountability know the amount? Do you know the amount of what's in the SAR fund?
No, we have not been able to track that amount of that account.
But we're certain that $2.6 million is not that, correct?
We have not been able to track the balance of that account.
So projecting all these revenues and paying all this overtime with a, with a fund that you can't even track and you're the chairperson, that becomes problematic as well, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. So maybe we should get BBMR before we, before we even go any further.
Go for a short recess. Chief, I would suggest you send somebody down to, right now, to request BBMR's presence.
The committee on the whole is back in session. Once again, I'm going to call for the motion that is, or the amendment that's currently before the committee that was tabled prior to the short recess. The motion was to increase the appropriation to add 68,000 for interest, 600,000 for the prior year, and $2 million for current year. So, on that motion to increase the appropriation by those amounts, all in...
Point of, point of order, real quick?
There was an objection, and I'm calling for the vote.
But we're still voting on the, the, now the amendment to the amendment, correct?
The 68,000, yes. On the motion to add the 68,000 to the amount to be appropriated in Bill 350. Any objections? No objections? Oh, you object? Okay. All right. The committee will then call for a vote on the motion to add 68,000. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Can I just call for a short recess?
I want to let you know again. The committee on the whole is back in session.
Once again, I'm going to call for the motion that is, or the amendment that's currently before the committee that was tabled prior to the short recess. The motion was to increase the appropriation to add 68,000 for interest, 600,000 for the prior year, and $2 million for current year. So, on that motion to increase the appropriation by those amounts, all in...
Point of, point of, point of order, real quick?
There was an objection, and I'm calling for the vote.
But we're still voting on the, the, now the amendment to the amendment, correct?
The 68,000, yes. On the motion to add the 68,000 to the amount to be appropriated in Bill 350. Any objections? No objections? Oh, you object? Okay. All right. The committee will then call for a vote on the motion to add 68,000. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Can I just call for a short recess?
I want to let you know again. The committee on the whole is back in session.
There was a vote on to add 68,000...
The committee on the whole is back in session. Once again, I'm going to call for the motion that is, or the amendment that's currently before the committee that was tabled prior to the short recess. The motion was to increase the appropriation to add sixty-eight thousand for interest, six hundred thousand for the prior year, and two million dollars for current year. So, on that motion to increase the appropriation by those amounts, all in...
Point of, point of, point of order, real quick?
There was an objection, and I'm calling for the vote.
But we're still voting on the, the, now the amendment to the amendment, correct?
The sixty-eight thousand, yes. On the motion to add the sixty-eight thousand to the amount to be appropriated in Bill 350. Any objections? No objections? Oh, you object? Okay, all right. The committee will then call for a vote on the motion to add sixty-eight thousand. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Can I just call for a short recess? The committee of the whole is back in session. There was a vote on to add sixty-eight thousand to the two thousand and thirteen prior year That vote failed. Senator Nicholas, did you want to...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. That motion that, that was, that recently filed, I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration of that, of that motion. That sixty thousand is the interest owed on the original six hundred that everyone kind of is agreeing on is as the, as the original baseline number to start with. Because that original six hundred was due back in two thousand and thirteen, based on the existing law, we do already owe at least ten percent on top of that. And it's already been confirmed by GPD that it does amount to approximately sixty-eight thousand. So that being already a clear obligation on top of the six hundred that's being discussed for two thousand and thirteen, that is pretty much agreed upon, I would like for us to reconsider, including that sixty-eight thousand, so that we can completely wipe out, at the very least, that, that obligation with respect to two thousand and thirteen.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to reconsider the action.
Point of information, I wasn't aware that it was for the two thousand and thirteen prior year obligations. That was my objection, was to add it to the two point six million dollars.
Oh, no.
That he was, that, that Vice Speaker was proffering. I don't disagree with the sixty-eight thousand interest being paid to the prior year obligations as well, so they're...
Yes, I know, but the body acted on that unfortunately. I thought I was pretty clear that it was to the two thousand and thirteen. Oh, okay. So there's no objection to the reconsideration? No, to the, to the reconsideration? All right? There's no objections to the reconsideration? Now on the motion.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to include an additional sixty-eight thousand dollars for the, as an amendment to the amendment, so that we have that sixty-eight thousand dollar sum, mark for the six hundred thousand dollar obligation in two thousand and thirteen.
Okay. On that motion, no objections? Motion carries. Senator Duñez, would you, were, still have a motion on the floor for the, or an amendment on the floor for the two million?
I, I, I understand that, Mr. Chairman. I would like to, once again, amend the amendment, since we've disposed of the additional sixty-eight thousand to the prior year obligation. And I'd like to explain that amendment.
To amend the amendment?
That's correct.
All right.
We disposed of the amendment to the amendment, I'm also adding an amendment to the amendment at this time.
Correct, so you wish to amend Vice Speaker's amendment?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Duñez, you spoke on that amendment already?
I believe that was on the motion?
No, that was on the amendment.
Okay, so somebody will have to, somebody else will have to move it if that's the... Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the correction.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, point of information.
Yes.
When we came back from the break, I was just trying to listen, right? And, and figure out where we're at, but my question still stands, is that, you know, I wanted to find out, we're appropriating, and nothing has been changed yet as of this time, whether, where we're getting this money from. And so, if someone has that, that answer, I think I would like that, them to address it, so that we know how we're going to move forward. Because we know we want to pay, we know how much that two thousand and thirteen prior year is, but we want to know if this SAR account truly has those funds available.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman. It's obvious, it's obvious that this SAR fund is no longer valid for this type of appropriation. So I will be making an amendment to strike the SAR fund from this. I, I don't know if I can make it now, or not, but, but it's obvious that, that we are going to make an unfunded mandate and a promise that we cannot keep using the SAR fund as a revenue source, so this is impossible.
Thank you for that information. The amendment on the floor is to increase the appropriation then in the bill to two million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. On that amendment, is there any objection?
Oh, yeah. I object.
Okay, all right, I'm just wanting to see you're still awake?
I object.
Okay, yes, I know.
Yes, I object, I object to two point six million dollars being an unfunded mandate-
I, I understand.
And a promise that's going to be broken to the police department and our hardworking men and women.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I object.
Yes. On the amendment, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails.
I'd like to make an amendment on the main motion.
Yes, you may.
No.
No. No.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, or, Mr. Chairperson. I'd like to take a one-minute recess, just to get my language in order, so I can make this amendment, that I'm going to proper, and then I'd like to resume right after that, please.
All right, we're just going to a short recess. Thank you very much. Senator McCready, I'd like to remind you that you're the main author of the bill, and we reckon, after everybody has spoken on the bill, we've gone back to you. This is your closing.
I'd like to make an amendment on the main motion, yes.
Right, as part of your closing, you will make an amendment, correct?
Sure, sure. Continuing discussion on the main motion, and I'm closing my argument, is that what you're asking, or my...
Yes, that, that would be the process here. Usually the author closes on his main bill, and so, everybody has already spoken. I recognize you for your closing, you, you have an amendment on your closing, and that's allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. My amendment is simple, and, and I want to thank the body for, for expressing all their information, the chief of police coming in here. At the end of the day, all I want to do is pay the overtime for the prior year, two thousand and thirteen. My amendment will be on line two, page one, notwithstanding any other provision of law, the sum of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars is hereby appropriated from fiscal year two thousand and fourteen's general fund revenues to the Guam Police Department for the purpose of paying prior year overtime incurred by the department. And, Mr. Chairman, if I might add, I'm not sure if I, I'm able to, but if this amendment passes, I would like to add the whole body as a co-sponsor of this bill, thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we get a copy of that, Mr. McCready?
My, my amendment, Mr. Chair, would be to remove, remove the, the SAR account, to to strike the supplemental appropriation revenue fund, and to just add the, notwithstanding any provision of the law. I'll pass it along.
Yes. On, yes, yes, from two thousand and fourteen revenues. Correct. All right. Senator Nicholas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't want to use up my ability to speak on the amendment just yet, I did have a point of inquiry, though, that I wanted to raise of the proffer of the amendment. He's, he's removing the SAR fund as the funding source, and he's just stating the general fund for FY two thousand and fourteen, and from, from my understanding, he's removing the SAR fund because of the, the, the lack of reliability of that being a, a suitable funding source. So now, I'm just, I'm just, I would like to inquire as to where the funding then is coming from in terms of the general fund identification. I mean, we can't just, just because we stick a notwithstanding line in the, in the amendment, doesn't mean that we just print, we just print that money now out of the general fund. So I, I would like to inquire as to where the, the funding is coming from then for that six hundred thousand from the general fund.
Thank you. You know, after what we've heard today, Mr. Chair, and listening to all of my good colleagues speak, and then getting, getting a letter from, from the office of the governor, saying he fully supports the efforts for the legislature to fund prior year overtime due to the police officers fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, the administration is prepared with cash flow to pay the overtime, we simply need the authorization from the legislature to make the payments. We ask senators to keep this simple, appropriate revenues for the identified funding source, and use it on overtime for GPD officers. This is something that, once again...
You wish to share that letter with the rest of the body?
I read it into the record, so obviously.
I know.
Yes, so I shared it with everyone. So, yes, I, I read this letter into the record, saying that the governor supports this fully. Now, this is another initiative that states that this legislature is listening to other branches of government. This SAR account from listening to everyone in this body today, including yourself, respectfully, Mr. Chairman, does not know how much money there is in there. So I am not going to make an empty promise to the Guam Police Department's hardworking men and women, when the governor of Guam right here says that he will pay this overtime if we appropriate it through the general fund revenues of two thousand and fourteen. So I'm hoping, and I'm confident, that the governor is telling us that he's going to pay this overtime with the monies that he has in his coffers. Anything other than that, anything, Mr. Chairperson, would be irresponsible of this body, who is the body that is authorized by law to, to appropriate this money for two thousand and thirteen. And so, when, when, when my good friend from Daddo slash Talafoco asks why I'm switching the funding revenue source, because it's going to get paid, and it may not get paid through the SAR. And so, we can sit here all day and argue, and ask why, why are we doing this, why aren't we doing this? Well, the, the question to me is, why are they not getting their overtime? And it's going to continue to be that. So if the governor of Guam is saying that through this funding mechanism, and through this funding source, these overtimes will get paid, then my amendment is to remove the SAR, get it from the general fund revenues, pay the six hundred and sixty-eight thousand with the interest included, and then work from there. We can still appropriate their overtime when we get the audited version in the two thousand and fifteen budget session, Mr. Chair. So that's, that is why, that is why.
Thank you very much. I'm still going to request that you provide the, the chair and the committee with a copy of the governor's letter, that'll be helpful. Senator Nicholas, then Senator Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I don't, I don't mean to split hairs, I totally agree that this needs to get paid. I'm just trying, you know, there's, there's a process, there's a whole process for the way we, we're supposed to be doing business here, and, and it works the same way as when we appropriate, as it does when GPD's supposed to be reporting overtime. You know, we don't want to be doing off-balance-sheet appropriations any more than we want to have off-balance-sheet liabilities that GPD's accruing by not recording these overtime expenditures appropriately into the, into the AS four hundred. So, when we talk about the, the amendment that's being proffered, if the governor's letter is accurate, and that six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars will be paid out of cash flow, we need to understand that that needs to actually be appropriated from the SAR fund, because that cash flow is in excess of what is necessary for all the other operations of the government. If the governor does not want us to appropriate out of the SAR fund, he could always transfer that six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars from any other resource. But for us to just do a notwithstanding provision in a bill that appropriates the six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, basically is us saying, okay, here's money for this, but we have no idea where it's coming from, and the governor's going to find it, and that's, we're not supposed to be doing it that way. If there's extra money to be appropriated, that money's supposed to go into the SAR fund, the supplemental appropriation reserve fund.
Point of information, point of information, respectfully, I'm sorry.
Please, please don't interrupt the senator.
I was interrupted three times today.
I understand that, Mr. McCready.
So, I'm not interrupt, I'm just calling for a point of information, the governor has committed to paying this through the general fund. We're not, we're not blindly, we're not blindly, Mr. Chairman, saying that, here, go ahead and find the money. He has committed to doing this.
Thank you, Mr. McCready.
You're welcome.
Yes, I, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I fully understand what the, what the retiring senator is saying. The governor's made that commitment, absolutely. Our job here in the legislature is to make sure that we're following the proper procedures in following through of that commitment. And so, if the governor's fully committing to six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, which we're all in agreeance with, it needs to be appropriated from somewhere. The SAR would be the proper place if there's excess revenue. If there isn't any excess revenue, we cannot just appropriate it out of the general fund and just magically create it with a notwithstanding provision. If there isn't any excess revenue, then the governor can only access that money by transferring it from someplace else. But if we pass a bill saying notwithstanding any of the provision of law, and all of a sudden create an additional six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in the budget without identifying where it's coming from, then we're creating money out of thin air, and that's absolutely above and beyond. I mean, we talk about empty promises. If I wanted to give money anywhere, then I can just write a bill like this for anything, notwithstanding this, and notwithstanding that, and appropriating here, and appropriating there. But the reality, Mr. Chairman, is if we're going to be appropriating money, and if we want to remain consistent with what the proffer of the amendment has stated in making sure the money's actually there, and if we want to also follow through with what the governor's committing to, and if all of us want to pay this overtime inclusive of the interest that's owed on it, then we either need to appropriate it from the SAR fund, which I think would have been the appropriate original language, or we cannot appropriate it from, from nowhere, the governor needs to actually transfer it, which means he can do that without us having to introduce this. Us introducing this, I mean, I'm, just the precedent alone, Mr. Chairman, is, is pretty frightening, because then we're going to be able to, to open the door, and, and everyone can just come to this body and say, hey, why can't you just do that for, for us as well? We need to be able to identify where the money's coming from, but if the governor's able to identify it from his cash flow, which is great, which I fully support, all he needs to do is transfer it. It doesn't require a bill. A bill actually creates a dangerous precedent. So I would prefer that we, I, I objected the amendment as it's written, I would prefer that we just go back to the original language, amend the amount to be six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and then go from there as an appropriation from the SAR fund, because then that excess revenue the governor will have to put into the SAR fund, and then it'll have to go to GPD. But if we're going to just throw out a notwithstanding provision that it comes to the general fund, and we're creating out of thin air, I just don't see that as being the proper way for us to account for how this budget is supposed to work. And I would like for us to instead have it come from the SAR fund, as we've originally discussed, or if it, if it's not going to be available in the SAR fund, then it, then really the only other way for that money to get to where it needs to go is for the governor to transfer it. And I would, I would, I would suspect that if I was, that, that the governor would be very excited to do that, you know? I mean, he'd be able to transfer and solve that problem on his own overnight, which would require the least amount of, of bureaucracy. So, I would prefer we simplify it, or we properly account for it.
Point of information, point of information.
I don't agree with us creating money out of thin air with a notwithstanding provision.
Point of information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't, I don't think it, I don't think this makes it easier, I think it makes it tougher. I just gave you information, educated information, that the governor's going to pay this out of the two thousand and fourteen revenues. I, I'm giving you information that makes it easier, and you guys are, or some people in this legislative voice objecting to it. I don't get it.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, are we trying to pay the overtime or not? That's my question.
Mr. McCready.
You, you have the letter in front of you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, you want, you can read it into the record if, if you wish.
Yes, the governor is not asking for an appropriation, he's asking for an authorization.
Okay, and I'm asking through my amendment to make the authorization... And I'm asking, through my amendment, to make the authorization part of the 2014 general fund revenues to make it easier, not harder. This becomes a, this becomes a process that we are going down, and, and, and I want to tell the Police Department that now, this, this, and this body, that this objection puts, puts their overtime pay for FY 2013 in jeopardy. So I ask, I ask...
Again, Mr. McCready.
I ask the proffer of the amendment, sir...
Thank you very much.
...to reconsider his objection. Knowing what he knows, reconsider his objection.
Thank you, thank you very much, Senator McCready. Senator San Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I just, if I just may clarify. I absolutely support the payment. I, I really wish that the proffer of the amendment would actually just step back and listen to what's being said and understand why it's being said. That he, he keeps trying to find conflict where there is none, and he keeps trying to find objection where there is none. I'm not objecting to paying the overtime. Absolutely, I've supported. I want to pay it with, with interest. But if we're going to pay it, we need to account for it properly. And if we're going to account for it properly, and it's excess revenue, above and beyond what we budgeted for, then all excess revenue goes into the SAR fund. Now, if there is no excess revenue, if the Governor is just going to use his cash management to pay this, then there is, then, then we do not appropriate from the SAR. But we also don't appropriate from the general fund either. If he's just using cash management to pay for this, then he just transfers the money. And it's very important for us to be able to understand that. I know that it's, it's a, it's a procedural issue, and I know that the retiring Speaker keeps trying to twist it into us not supporting it. Absolutely not. I'm saying let's do it the right way. And the right way is we either appropriate it from the SAR if there is excess revenue, and if there isn't excess revenue, if it's just cash management, then the Governor just transfers the money. And he identifies where he's transferring it from, and he takes care of it from there. But anything else, and this, you know, grandstanding at this level, Mr. Chairman, making these kind of accusations to senators who are trying to help the process along the right way, I just don't get it. You know, this is like, I, I just don't get it. I'm trying to be as clear as possible. I'm hoping that the, the proffer of the amendment can understand why it has to happen a certain way in order for us to properly account for it. I know he's insistent on doing it his way. It can be done. It will be done. I'm just saying let's just do it the right way. We either appropriate from the SAR, or we all join together and introduce a resolution asking the Governor to transfer the money. But that's, that's the only real proper way for us to account for this. We can't just out of the blue, notwithstanding appropriate from the general fund. It doesn't work that way. Budgeting doesn't work that way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator San Nicholas. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I understand correctly, the procedure of appropriations, at least in the last 10 years since I've been here, as I understand it, when we passed the budget for the year, we had a balanced budget, which meant everything that was coming in or anticipated to be received had been appropriated out.
Correct.
And I thought that the practice has been, over the last 10 years that I've been in this body, that if you're going to take anything from the current year appropriation, or appropriate from that balanced budget that was passed last September, you have to say, the bill has to read that you're taking $600,000 from a specific account. At least, that's what I remember us doing in the past. And every time we try to make an appropriation, you've insisted, and the Office of Finance and Budget has insisted, that if you're taking it from the current year appropriation, point out where in the current year appropriation you're going to deduct that money. In the U.S. Congress, they call it, um, pay or, or something.
Pay as you go.
Pay as you go. Because it's, our balance, our budget is balanced. And so if you're going to take, if you're going to spend any more than what we, the revenue that we anticipated, then the bill should read, $600,000 is taken from so-and-so. Even the Governor realizes that in the way that he transfers funds. He doesn't just transfer funds, $200,000 from the, from the budget. It's $200,000 from a specific account in a specific department in a specific object category that he takes that money from, reducing that appropriation, that authorization by that amount.
That is correct.
This just does not meet the procedure by which this should be done. The retiring Speaker is correct. If we're, if it's going to be just out of whatever money's coming in, then that should be in the SAR account. The Governor has said that there's $30 million in, in surplus revenue for this year. That money should be in the SAR account. And so there should be more than enough money in the SAR account to make the 600, or the 2.6, or the 2.8, whatever number needs to be paid for GPD. But if we just pass this bill as is, and I'm almost willing to just let it go just to prove the point, then it's going to, you need to have it come from somewhere. Take it from where, you know, whatever department he figures he can, he can deduct, 100 from here, 100 from there, 100 from there. If it comes out to 668, that's fine. That's how he did it last year, when he did the first payment of overtime for, um, the, the GPD. I'm trying to find it in the, but there was a, of transfer funds, uh, last October of $100,000 from the bus operations for the specific purpose of paying, uh, overtime for GPD. And so it has to come from a specific account. It can't just be from the general fund. Because that's already been fully appropriated to a zero budget, I mean, to a balanced budget that we passed last September.
Thank you. And, and even in the Governor's letter, he says, "Keep it simple, appropriate revenues from the identified funding source, and use it to pay GPD overtime." So, even the Governor's asking us to make sure we identify the funding source. Senator Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And it's, it's a good thing, I think, at least in my opinion, we came back full circle because my inability to remove the amendment, which is correct as per the rules, was going to bring this back to the, um, $668,000. So that's what we're discussing now. Mr. Chairman, I, I will use this, and I stand to be corrected for the record, that the discussion in the last session was along the same lines. When the good gentleman from Zonia moved the appropriation from the same account, Mr. Chairman, the SAR account, and there was a, a reluctance to have commingled in that other appropriations, the good Senator from Talafoco slash Dedito moved his bill and removed it from there. And I believe, unless I'm corrected, Mr. Chairman, that became a general fund appropriation with the transfer authority of the Governor in order to provide for sanctuary. So I think we're kind of going down the same road. And so I would say, uh, that, um, on this issue, if, if we are, if we are stuck on and we'll only use it from the SAR, then, you know, let's, let's go ahead and, you know, make that, uh, our, the decision by a vote of the body, Mr. Chairman. And this time I call for the vote, call the question.
Thank you. Just as a clarification, the sanctuary appropriation by Senator San Nick, uh, San Nicholas in the last was from, they raised the revenues. And so he took it from the additional raising of the revenues. So he, he didn't just take it out of thin air. The body actually increased the revenues in the budget, and that's where he was then able to get his, uh, funding. So it wasn't just, uh, taking it out of thin air. So just, just for the body's information. Any other speakers on the amendment? All right. No other on the... On the amendment, the amendment reads, notwithstanding any other provision of law, the sum of $668,000 is hereby appropriated from FY 2014 revenues. From FY 2014 general fund revenues to the Guam Police Department for the purpose of paying prior year's overtime incurred by the Guam Police Department. Senator San Nicholas.
Yes, point of inquiry, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Statute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the proposed language, um, it was brought up that, um, we are not appropriating, but we are authorizing. There is a word here in the, in the amendment that's proffered that says is hereby appropriated. Would it be more appropriate if that was changed, is hereby authorized?
I'm fine with that. Is there an amendment to that? No objection?
I'd like to proffer that as an amendment, then, Mr. Chairman. Amendment to the amendment.
Under an amendment to the amendment? Any objections? Amendment passes. On the main amendment as amended? Any objections? You're not objecting? Okay. No objections? Amendment passes. Pirouette now, pirouette. Thank you very much. There being no further discussion before the Committee. May I call now then for a recommendation of the proceedings of the Committee? Senator, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and Mr. Chairman. I, at the conclusion of this Committee of the Whole on the matter of Bill 350-32, as for, as amended in the Committee of the Whole, I move that we rise from this Committee of the Whole with the recommendation to pass.
With all amendments intact.
With the Committee's recommendation, with all amendments intact, with the recommendation to pass.
On that motion, no objections. Motion carries. Committee of the Whole is now adjourned, and will report back to the body.
Chairman Panglinen, you're recognized.
Senator Smalls, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the Committee on the Whole has risen from its deliberations on Bill Number 350 with a recommendation to do pass, and wishes to report back to the body that the body act on Bill Number 350 with all amendments intact, that it be placed in the third reading file for a vote with a recommendation to do pass.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Any objections placing the bill in the voting file? We'll take a short recess and see the bills are all ready.
We'll take a short recess and see the bills are all ready. Legislation back in session. We're now on the voting file. The first bill. It's Bill three thirty-four.
Bill number three three four dash thirty-two LS as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land introduced by R.J. Respecho. An act to appropriate the sum of two hundred six thousand five hundred fifty dollars from the Supplemental Appropriations Revenue Fund for the purchase of a ballot tabulation system and the purchase of a ballot stock and coding services to be utilized by the Guam Election Commission to conduct the two thousand fourteen elections and future elections and for other purposes.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, excused. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
On Bill three thirty-four dash thirty-two LS. We have recorded fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Bill three thirty-four is duly passed by Minutantai Dos Leyeso Tuan Guahan. On Bill one seventy-two. I mean, I'm sorry, one seventy-three.
Bill number one seven three dash thirty-two LS as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land and further amended on the floor. Introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to amend section two, one G and section three of public law thirty-two dash zero five three relative to flood mitigation projects of the Department of Public Works.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, excused. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
On Bill one seventy-three dash thirty-two LS. One seventy-three dash thirty-two. We show fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Bill one seventy-three dash thirty-two is passed by Minutantai Dos Leyeso Tuan Guahan. Bill three oh seven.
Bill number three zero seven dash thirty-two COR as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land and amended and further substituted on the floor. Introduced by Frank B. Ugin Jr. An act to amend section five one zero two D of chapter five, title seven, Guam quote annotated, relative to the power of the Judiciary Council to adopt pay schedules and plans for non-law enforcement employees of the judiciary of Guam and to appropriate the sum of five hundred ten thousand dollars from the general fund to the unified judiciary for the FY two thousand fourteen salary and benefit increases of its classified and unclassified non-law enforcement employees.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, excused. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
On Bill three oh seven dash thirty-two. We show fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Bill three oh seven dash thirty-two is hereby passed by Minutantai Dos Leyeso Tuan Guahan. Bill three oh nine. Roll call. I'm sorry. Read the bill, please.
Bill number three zero nine dash thirty-two COR as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land and amended on the floor. Introduced by Vicente Bency Pangolinan, B.J.F. Cruz. An act to add a new section seven to chapter one of title, I'm sorry, of public law thirty-two dash zero six eight and to repeal and reenact section one three one zero nine eight five of chapter thirteen, title two, Guam quote annotated, relative to prioritizing the use of additional section thirty revenues and to increase transparency and accountability in the reporting of section thirty revenues to be received by the government of Guam and to be known as the Supplemental Appropriations Act of two thousand fourteen.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, nay. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, excused. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay.
On Bill three oh nine dash thirty-two. We've recorded eight yea votes, six nay votes, one excused absence. Bill three oh nine dash thirty-two is hereby passed by Minutantai Dos Leyeso Tuan Guahan. Bill three thirty-five.
Bill number three three five dash thirty-two COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. An act to amend sections one two two three one seven and one two two three one eight of Article twenty-three, Chapter twelve, Part two, Title ten, Guam quote annotated, relative to extending the timeline for obtaining exemptions and exceptions for social worker licensure.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, excused. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
On Bill three thirty-five dash thirty-two. We've recorded fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Bill three thirty-five dash thirty-two is hereby passed by Minutantai Dos Leyeso Tuan Guahan. On resolution three seventy-nine dash thirty-two LS.
Resolution number three seventy-nine dash thirty-two LS introduced by Michael F. Pisa Nicholas, G.T. Wampat E.D.D., Frank B. Ugin Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, Michael T. Limtiaco. Relative to respectfully requesting that Congresswoman Madeline Z. Brodalio introduce legislation to allow government of Guam employees to be covered under social security.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, excused. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
On resolution three seventy-nine dash thirty-two LS. We've recorded fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Resolution number three seventy-nine dash thirty-two is hereby passed by Minutantai Dos Leyeso Tuan Guahan. Bill three fifty has been distributed. Do you still wish additional time and we'll go through the, everybody's ready? everybody's ready to vote? Bill 350 dash thirty-two.
Bill number three-five-zero dash thirty-two L S as amended on the floor. Introduced by Brant T. McCready. An act to authorize a sum of six hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars from fiscal year two thousand and fourteen general fund revenues for the purpose of paying prior years overtime incurred by the Guam Police Department.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duainius. Senator Duainius, aye. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, excused. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye.
On Bill 350-32, we recorded fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Bill 350-32 is hereby passed by Minutantai Dosnalesu Tuan Guahan. We now have nominations, appointments. First, on the nomination of, do I? On the nomination of Crystal K. Koga to serve as a member of the Council of the Arts and Humanities Agency, CAHA, for the period as set forth by law. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Let the record reflect that Ms. Crystal Koga has received unanimous consent by the members present. Ms. Crystal Koga is hereby confirmed to serve as a member of the Council of the Arts and Humanities Agency. On the nomination of William T. Dietrich to serve as a member of the Guam Economic, I'm no, Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board for a period as set forth in statute. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. The, Mr. Dietrich has received unanimous consent of all members. Mr. Dietrich is hereby confirmed as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board. On the nomination of Oscar Calvo to serve as a member of the Guam Port Authority Board of Directors. The nomination of Oscar Calvo to serve as a member of the Guam Port Authority Board is hereby passed by this Guam Legislature. Mr. Calvo is confirmed as a member of the Port Authority Board of Directors. On the nomination of James Casayo to serve as a construction industry representative on the Contractors License Board. All those in favor, indicate by raising your hand. Let the record reflect that Mr. Casayo has received unanimous consent by the members present and is hereby confirmed as a member, construction industry representative of the Contractors License Board for the period as set forth by statute. On the nomination of Adilia Z. Custodial to serve as general member representative on the Contractors Board for a period set forth in statute, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Please, the nomination of Adilia Z. Custodial has received unanimous approval by this body and is hereby confirmed as a general member representative on the Contractors License Board. On the nomination of Zenon E. Ballenger to serve as a member of the Haguenya Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Mr. Ballenger has received unanimous consent of all members of the legislature and is hereby confirmed as a member of the Haguenya Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners for a period as set forth in statute. On the nomination of Edward G. Tolan to serve as a member of the A. B. Wampat International Authority Board of Directors, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Mr. Tolan has received unanimous consent of all members of the legislature and is hereby confirmed as a member of the A. B. Wampat International Authority Board of Directors. On the nomination of Gerald A. Cruz to serve as a member of the Guam Regional Transit Authority Board of Directors, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Mr. Gerald A. Cruz has received unanimous consent of all members of the Guam Legislature present and is hereby confirmed as a member of the Guam Regional Mass Transit Authority Board of Directors. On the nomination of Polly Mike C. Cruzostimo to serve as member of the Criminal Injuries Compensation Commission, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Let the record reflect that Polly Mike Cruzostimo has received unanimous consent of all members of the legislature and is hereby confirmed as a member of the Criminal Injuries Commission Compensation, Compensation Commission. Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, before I call for a motion to adjourn subject to your call, I just want to call the body's attention to the recently bill passed, 309-32, which we voted on. I don't believe the engrossed version reflects the discussion that we had here on the session floor. I want to call your attention to page five, lines twenty-six and twenty-seven. And we might have to procedurally go back to motions and make sure that we were very clear with what we were voting on. On line twenty-six, it says, "Construction of the gymnasium which is authorized from the appropriation in this subsection B." My understanding is that the language that was adopted, which should have just read, "which is authorized herein." This new language that we're seeing, it ties the construction of the gymnasium to the six million dollar appropriation. And I want to, I want to ask the body if that's what, if that's what they intended during that discussion, but certainly when I, when I voted on the amendment, this is not, this is not the language that was put before the body at the time, so I, I call for a recess. A minute recess.
We'll have a short recess. Recognized.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and colleagues, please bear me with me while I do some procedural motions. We just adopted Bill 309 dash three-two. And on page five, uh, it, we, yeah, the council and the clerk has prepared a new page five and last sentence. Uh, so my first motion is, um... I guess because we already adopted the engrossed version, Mr. Speaker, my first motion is to reconsider the actions of the body on the adoption of Bill number 309 dash three-two COR as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land, and amended on the floor.
Any objection to the motion to reconsider?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And notwithstanding the House rules, I move to pull Bill 309 dash three-two, uh, from the voting file out to the second reading file.
Any objection?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we, um... For purposes of accepting this document, that we accept Bill number 309 dash three-two COR as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land, and amend it on the floor for purposes of discussion.
Any objection?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As I said earlier, we have a new page five that amends the lines twenty-six and twenty-seven. And I've explained that, um, origin, what we voted on said authorized from the appropriation to subsection B. But based on the discussion and further clarification with the council, uh, she's prepared a new language that should just read, "Construction of the gymnasium which is authorized herein." So that's my amendment.
Does everybody understand the amendment? Any objection to the amendment? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Senator Ada?
I think, uh, Mr. Speaker, just to be consistent, uh, on line twenty-six, uh, we should, we've identified every, all the other facilities as GDOE offices, GDOE warehouses. And what we're authorizing with the use of tax credits is the GDOE gymnasium. So I would just, uh, add then, on line twenty-six, before the word gymnasium, GDOE.
Any objection to that amendment?
So, Mr. Speaker, I move then to place this bill, this version, in the voting file and that we vote with that engrossment.
Any objection to that motion? We're back in the, um... Voting file? Bill 309?
Bill number 309 dash thirty-two COR is substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land, and amended on the floor, introduced by Vicente Bency Pangolinan, VJF Cruz, an act to add a new section seven to chapter one of Public Law thirty-two dash zero-six-eight and to repeal and reenact section one-three-one-zero-nine-eight-five of chapter thirteen, title two, Guam Code Annotated, relative to prioritizing the use of additional section thirty revenues and to increase transparency and accountability in the reporting of section thirty revenues to be received by the government of Guam and to be known as the Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2014.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada? Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Ugin? Senator Ugin, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz? Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius? Senator Duennius, nay. Senator Limtiaco? Senator Limtiaco, nay. Senator McCready? Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison? Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan? Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Rispisho? Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez? Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat? Speaker Wampat, excused. Senator Yamashita? Senator Yamashita, nay.
On Bill 309 dash thirty-two, we recorded eight yea votes, six nay votes, one, uh, excused absence. The, um, Bill 309 dash thirty-two is hereby adopted by the, uh, Minatantai Dosla Hisutuan in Guam. Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Having exhausted the session agenda, I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
Any objection to the adjournment?